Good evening, everyone, and welcome to Harrisburg City Council Legislative Session, Tuesday, March 8, 2016. Condisse mean toward six o'clock. Mr. Petrowski, please do the roll call.
Mr. Allen.
President.
Mr. Baltimore.
Here.
Ms. Daniels.
Here.
Ms. Hodges.
Present.
Mr. Johnson.
Present.
Mr. Majors.
Here.
Ms. Williams.
Present. Thank you. Mr. Baltimore, would you please do the invocation?
You all now in this moment in reflection for those who are grieving or suffering in our neighbors and neighborhoods. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Baltimore. Mr. Allen, pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Allen. Moving on to communications, we have a presentation from representatives of the Capital Area Green Belt Association. Would you please come forward?
Thank you very much, Madam President, Council. I want to thank you for allowing us to address you tonight, and I want to congratulate you on the recent listing in the U.S. News and World Report as one of the top 25 cities in the United States for quality of life, and that reflects very well on our leadership. I thank you for that leadership and congratulate you.
Thank you.
Now, very conveniently, one of the factors that was listed in that article was our trail system. And we are here tonight to formally thank Council for the support that you have given to the Green Belt that has allowed us to turn this trail into a real asset for the city. Your support has enabled us to permanently protect a .6-mile portion of the trail in South Harrisburg and designate it as public parkland, and that has enabled us to go forward for a grant that will enable us to pave that section. You have strengthened the zoning in South Harrisburg to encourage and promote uses that are compatible with the Green Belt. You have committed funding from solid waste tipping fees to support planning to address some pretty serious erosion in the Paxton Parkway section of the Green Belt. You recently approved a city grant to request federal funding to resurface the lower-level walkway in Riverfront Park, and the Green Belt worked to garner letters of support for that grant. You approved a resolution last year to approve new signals and walkways at North Front Street and Vaughn and at Cameron Street, and that will enhance safety of the Green Belt. Next year, we're planning to implement traffic safety improvements at seven locations. There's a January 2017 bid date for that, and we are planning an April 2017 bid date for a connector trail from Wildwood Lake to Fort Hunter. We would not be able to maintain the Green Belt as the asset that it has become without your support, and we sincerely express our appreciation for that support. We have a plaque in recognition of the support that you have given to the Green Belt over the years, but very specifically in this past year. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Well, Harrisburg City Council certainly appreciates this award and all the volunteers who give their time to maintain the Green Belt, which is a beautiful asset to the area, and hopefully this year I, as well as other council members, will be able to participate in the Tour Day Belt, so thank you so much. Moving on to under-communications, Mr. Johnson would like to speak to the council. You can sit down, Mr. Johnson.
Oh, I'll sit down.
No, you don't have to stand.
My address is not looking.
Look here, don't be wrong with it either.
Good evening, Madam President, City Council. Thank you for the opportunity. I just wanted to talk about three things, three pieces of equipment, real quick. Sorry I couldn't be here yesterday, I had a prior engagement. Three types, three equipment, I'm talking about the tow truck, the skid loader, and also the loader. The reason why we need this equipment now is, start with the tow truck. Tow truck, right now, we are not in a position to actually tow our own vehicles, like when our vehicles break down. We always got to call out. I think we're wasting money there by doing that. Also, like we already experienced during snow emergencies and things like that, we always put all this information, we have all these ordinance, but we can't support the ordinance because we can't tow anything. We rely on a Don's for too much. Don's been making a lot of money off the city. We need to be self-sufficient. I mean, we really need to consider this because we could be really generating some revenue here while people are not doing what they're supposed to do. So that's why we definitely need the tow truck, because like, one instance, I just want to give you an example, if one of our trash trucks is in the alley, we can't get out of the alley because you've got somebody at the other end. We have to call the comp center, which now, Doffin County, we don't have our own. That takes almost like an hour, hour and a half, to get somebody to get out there, and then we've got to wait on Don. You're talking about two hours and a trash guy's not being able to do their job. So they don't allow us to really do our job, so we need to be able to tow people when they are not allowing us to be able to, you know, perform our duties. So that's one thing with the tow truck. As far as the loader itself, we just, unfortunately, we experienced a retaining wall down at the incinerator, it's collapsed, and me and Wayne, we have to meet with Lockswama tomorrow at 1:00 to talk about the retaining wall. That's where our recycling trailer would be at, where we load our recycling, dump our recycling in our trailer. So we had to make other provisions now that we have to actually dump our recycling in one of our location facilities, and we need that loader. So again, we need more than one loader because we run into situations like, hopefully it never happens, you know, this year, that we catch a flood over there and nobody ever been in a flood. We have a lot of debris over there, I mean, it'd be trees and everything else over there, so those loaders come in handy, and we need to have more than one, even when we have tree removal, the same thing. Also, we multitask, because like right now, you haven't been over City Island, you know, we had like ballpark figures, about like 15,000 tons of snow that was over on City Island. Well, we've been working the last three weeks of removing that snow, moving it around, taking advantage of the warm weather and everything like that, but we had to borrow somebody else's loader, because again, we don't have these type, we don't have this equipment, we don't have enough of it, put it that way. So that's one reason why we need the loaders now, okay? And as far as the skid loader, skid loader is multit, you can multitask with that, because we can use that far as milling, you know, we out there doing paving and stuff, we can be milling other areas. We got one on the hill, one uptown, because with the manpower that we hiring, we can actually have projects going on now, moving forward. So this is why we need this type of equipment, because during the snowstorm, we had to borrow somebody's equipment again for us to be able to do our job. And I just think we need to be more self-sufficient where we can, you know, we can take care of ourselves. So that's the reason why I think that's why we need this equipment right now.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Johnson.
Okay.
Council members have any questions?
I have a quick question.
Real quickly.
Just in regards to, and this is probably a question more for Neil, in terms of towing, how does, do we have like an ordinance in place where we're able to, I know, I'm thinking like within like snow emergency routes, they kind of, the signs probably clearly say that if you're in violation of this, that we can tow you, but a situation where Mr. Johnson referred to like the alleyway, where someone's blocking the alleyway.
We probably need to amend the ordinance. We do have a towing ordinance, and it was at some point years ago, the police would actually, I think, tow a whole lot more frequently than they do now. You know, but it's old.
Yeah, I would definitely recommend probably, especially if we're going to buy a tow truck and we're looking at possibly, you know, taking advantage, not like a, you know, basically holding people accountable for the things that they're supposed to be doing. You know, we need to make sure our ordinance are in line with that aspect.
And our office really hasn't weighed in on the question. There are two different things from using a truck to tow our own vehicles and using a truck to, there's liabilities that come and things when you're towing third-party vehicles, and that just has to be sorted out. But I think as of right now, the truck was sort of on the wish list as opposed to a reality, so that hasn't been sorted out at this point.
Okay. Mr. Baltimore?
Probably not an answer, a question for you, but maybe for Wayne. We don't, I don't think, have enough visible signs that indicate snow routes, like say Penbrook does on our snow routes.
Well, I can answer that, Wayne. Well, people knock them down so much, it's like the streetlights. That's why they ain't up. We add them up, they just come down faster than we put them up. Yeah, but that's, we do have to replace them. You're absolutely right.
Anything else, council members? Thank you, Mr. Johnson. I appreciate you.
You're welcome.
Oh, sorry, sorry, right. Sorry, I'm sorry. Okay, Ms. Daniels has a question.
Yeah, I just wanted to know, in terms of towing non-city cars, where will they be placed?
Oh, that's something that myself and the administration are looking at, because we just know that it's a great opportunity to actually just be self-sufficient and be able to, you know, it's one thing, you just can't be able to do your job because you've got to call everybody, but we looking for somewhere to actually put it at, because we actually had to have a fenced in if we towed somebody's vehicle. We definitely have to do that.
A lot of liability.
Right.
Okay.
And we do have a facility for impounded vehicles right now.
Yes.
But it's not, it wouldn't be sufficient.
Wayne? Any other questions, council members? Okay, thank you, Mr. Johnson.
You're welcome.
Okay, moving on to courtesy of the floor, anyone to my right, please come to the mic at this time.
Yes. All right, I would like to thank City Council first for hosting this, and also, I was informed that I'm a little bit early with this. This is regarding Bill 4-2013.
If you just state your name for the record first, please.
My name is Andrew White, and I've lived in Harrisburg. I live off of Fulton Street, so I'm in Midtown.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. So I just wanted to actually get some basics out, maybe to clarify ahead of these meetings coming up regarding amending our criminal code regarding small possession, possession of small amounts of cannabis. I just wanted to first kind of show how, where Harrisburg is, we're the ninth-largest city in the entire state and the sixth-largest third-class city, so we do, as mentioned earlier, have a responsibility of making ourselves higher up on lists of, you know, qualified cities, but Governor Wolf, whose mansion is literally just down the street, even though he might not, you know, use it as much, he did also mention that we break up families for reasons that we shouldn't, and I think Bill 4-2016 would actually go a long way in helping amend our antiquated criminal justice system regarding that. Furthermore, two more quick points. Over in 2013, rather, just under 20,000 residents of the city of, well, the state of Pennsylvania were arrested for small possession, or possession of small amounts of marijuana, pardon me, alone. Now, that's taking into account the metro population, the city population proper, just under half, so if we can kind of expand that and think about jailing half of our city just for that crime alone, it would come to a grinding halt overnight. Furthermore, cannabis, which is as actual name as marijuana, was a pejorative created in the early 20th century, actually shares a lot of species, over 170, with the Cannabis Cave family. Cannabis Cave family includes, as we know, hemp and also hops. Hemp being what our constitution is written on and in our colonial times, what a lot of farmers made money off of as well. Furthermore, carbon dating reveals that cannabis usage is over 2,500 years old, originating in the Asiatic regions. Pliny the Elder, who was also a commander of the Roman Army and Navy, studied it around 23 to 79 C.E. And then finally, it shares basically pedigree with hops, which Pennsylvania is home to now one of the largest breweries in the entire country, that being Inling, and outed, per fortune, last year, outed Sam Adams, pardon me, out of Baltimore. Finally, supporting cannabis law reform at this point in our, in the early 21st century isn't a political liability. It's not something that, you know, you're going to be looked down upon for actually supporting. In fact, I would believe it would be quite the opposite as to where, if we don't start, you know, reviewing and renewing our attitudes regarding cannabis possession, especially small amounts and nonviolent crime, and that could actually result in it being a political liability. But I just, I know I was a little early, I just kind of wanted to get that out ahead of the meetings, and I do appreciate your consideration of Bill 4-2016.
You're welcome. Thank you so much, sir.
And we are having a meeting on Thursday, this Thursday, right at Hackham Town, at 5:30, room 206. So if you could come, we really appreciate it.
Thank you. Anyone in the middle?
Good evening, our council members. Jeremy Domenico, South Summit Street. I'm hoping that the council can see to outfit the neighborhood services with the tools needed. It seems that they're going to be pretty much the only profitable entity in the city currently, and I was raised to believe that a good technician never blames their tools. The tools that these men and women are forced to use on a daily basis are outrageous. As far as a tow truck, currently, the city owns a light-duty truck. It's almost worthless. You need to invest in a medium-duty truck, which would handle the fleet and any light-duty vehicles that the city would need to have out of the way. I would also think that most importantly, that this council would invest in the most important thing about neighborhood services, and that's the people. We need the people that have a vested and civic interest in this city to make it worthy of the 25th best place in the country. And speaking on the Green Belt, I personally have cleaned up the Green Belt 19 times of illegal dumping. If City Council can find any money at all for dumping cameras, I'm running out of them. I've got six of my own deployed around the city right now. I can't move them around quick enough. So if there's any money for that type of video surveillance, I hope it'd be considered. Thank you for your time.
You're welcome, Mr. Domenico. Thank you. Anyone else in the middle?
Good evening, I'm Daniel D. Graham, 217 North Second Street, here in Harrisburg. Again, the traffic situation at Second and Chestnut Streets is still messed up. I have not seen anything done so far to improve the situation for pedestrians crossing the street at Second and Chestnut Street. Again, I say, please, put the red lights on and, at the same time, the pedestrian walk signs are on, put the red lights on in all directions at the same time so that all vehicles are stopped when pedestrians are crossing the street. Again, with the present situation, arrangement of the red lights and walk signs, it gives the, it gives the turning motorists the green light at the same time pedestrian walk signs are on. It's just plain crazy, asinine, absurd to do that. It puts the pedestrians on a collision course with the turning motorists, and as you know, some motorists do yield the right-of-way, but some motorists do not yield the right-of-way to pedestrians. There's where the problem is, and how about either put the traffic lights and walk signs on back the way it was, or how about installing a push-button device for pedestrians, which can be, which would be activated only when there's pedestrians waiting to cross the street, so that pedestrians can push the button on the pole, and that would put the walk signs on and the red lights on in all directions, so that all vehicles are stopped when the pedestrian crosses the street, and leave it that way for at least 50 seconds to give the pedestrians enough time to cross the streets. Either that or have police officers directing traffic all day during the weekdays. The only, again, again, I say, the only way, I say this to City Council, Mayor Papenfus, with all due respect, the only way you're going to make it safe for pedestrians to cross the street is to have the red lights on and walk signs on in all directions at the same time, so that all vehicles are stopped when the pedestrian walk signs are on. So again, either that way or install a push-button device like there are in other intersections here in Harrisburg, so that pedestrian waiting to cross the street can push a button that puts the red lights and the walk signs on in all directions at the same time, so that all vehicles are stopped, and leave the red lights and the walk signs on like that at at least 50 seconds or a whole minute to give the pedestrians enough time to cross the street in safety. And please make these improvements before someone gets hit by one of those drivers there. And also, as Les Ford pointed out at the last meeting, as Les Ford pointed out at the last meeting, the situation at 19th and Dairy Streets needs attention also, needs police officers there also directing traffic, and to protect the schoolchildren and other people crossing the streets. That's a busy intersection, there are schools there. All right, and also on this agenda, I noticed Resolution 10-2016, a resolution ratifying the submission of an application to the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation requesting a multimodal transportation fund grant of $6,710,000 to improve vehicular and transit. Hopefully that includes both bus and more passenger rail service for the Harrisburg region, and pedestrian and bicycle movements north of the Capitol complex. How about south of the Capitol complex also, as I mentioned, and address several transportation-related safety issues? So again, please include these suggestions that I just mentioned in this Resolution 10-2016 to improve the traffic and pedestrian safety situation at Second and Chestnut and also at 19th and Dairy Streets, as Les Ford pointed out, and including having police officers direct traffic at the busy times during the week. Thank you much, God bless.
Thank you, Mr. Graham. Anyone else in the middle? Anyone to my left? Thank you. Moving on to approval minutes. Council members, approval of the legislative session minutes of February 23, 2016. Are there any admissions, deletions, or corrections that you noticed? Hearing none. Motion, municipal stand is approved. Moving on to reports of committees. Report from Chair Majors on the Public Works Committee meeting on Wednesday, February 24, 2016. Mr. Majors, are you ready with your report?
Yes, I am. Right, on Wednesday, February 24, approximately 5:30 PM, the Public Works Committee met, council members present included, Councilwoman Daniels, Councilwoman Hodges, Councilwoman President Williams. We met to consider two resolutions that were before the committee, Resolution 4 of 2016, a resolution ratifying the submission of a grant application to the Commonwealth's, excuse me, to the Commonwealth's Department of Environmental Protection for the purpose of, for the purposes of purchasing two automated leaf collectors. Present at the meeting were City Engineer Wayne Martin, who we had a productive discussion about the necessary reasons for the purchase of those collection machines. Additionally, was Resolution 15 of 2016, a resolution approving a professional services contract with Wallace Montgomery and Associates, LLP, a design professional to perform engineering for the Third Street Multimodal Project Phase 1B. Members from the organization were there and gave a presentation to the members of the committee, and I am recommending that the committee, that the council approve those two resolutions as submitted.
Thank you so much, Mr. Majors. Moving on to report from Chair Hodges on the Parks Recreation and Enrichment Committee meeting on Wednesday, February 24, 2016. Ms. Hodges, are you ready for your report?
Yes, I am, Madam President. The Parks Recreation and Enrichment Committee held a meeting on Wednesday, February 24, from 6:10 PM to 6:30 PM. The members in attendance was myself, Destiny Hodges, the chair, Vice President Charmaine Daniels, Westburn Majors, and President Wanda Williams. The only business for that night was a Resolution 8, 2016, a resolution ratifying the submission of a grant application to the Commonwealth's Department of Transportation for the purpose of improving the riverwalk slab and steps in Riverfront Park. Jonathan Hicks, the city grants manager, and Wayne Martin, the city's engineer, provided us with background information on the erosion of the steps due to flooding from Tropical Storm Lee. The resolution has a lot of great community support, including letters from Senator Teplitz and Representative Patty Kim. The new walkway will help with runoff water and reduce flooding. This gives city residents and businesses to have better access to the river, and will be completed in time for the 100th anniversary of the compona. I urge my colleagues to support the resolution, and that concludes my report.
Thank you, Ms. Hodges. Moving on to report from Chair Allen on the Budget and Finance Committee meeting on Monday, March 7, 2016. Mr. Allen, are you ready with your report?
I am ready, thanks.
Thank you.
As Council President said, our meeting occurred yesterday, March 7, called order shortly after 5:30. Up for discussion were four resolutions, the first of which was Resolution 16, a resolution that was approving a professional services contract with Trout, Ebersol, and Groff to conduct a kind of our, a pre-audit review of various things, including post-employment benefit obligations, disposable, receivable, sanitation, reconciliation of city workers' comp liability, compensated absence, receivable accounts. This has been, we've worked with them for a number of years, this is just an ongoing and continuing relationship, of which I urge my colleagues to vote an affirmative for this approval. Also up for discussion was Resolution 18, a resolution ratifying a professional services contract with Heist, Gibbons, and Company to provide unemployment compensation consultation services as needed. This is also another ongoing relationship that actually saves the city some money without having to have someone actually work full-time in the city to do those services as well. They actually provide a great benefit to help guide the city, to help understand how to reduce those future claims, but will also serve as a representative for those, I guess, court proceedings as they occur. So I also recommend my colleagues to vote an affirmative of this approval process. Also up for discussion was Resolution 19, a resolution approving professional services agreements with Mayor Dussel, certified public accountant, to conduct audits of the city's financial statements. We just went through an RFP process a year ago, we had selected them as our company of choice. They've been with us for a number of years. They are located within the city, it's helpful, they're, they provide a great benefit. This is just a continuation of what will be ultimately a three-year agreement before we go out and RFP again for this process. So I also encourage my colleagues to vote in the affirmative for this as well. Lastly, for discussion was Resolution 17, a resolution approving the first proposed 2016 budget reallocations. Pardon me. As part of this resolution, we looked at reallocating some funds from the Host V, Host Fund, I'm sorry, to account for paying additional student workers this summer, as per Council President's request, I guess, it was a month ago. Also, in that reallocation, per Aaron Johnson's remarks, to equipment, we have increased the timeline to purchase some additional equipment, and so we've allocated some additional resources coming from the disposal fund in order to do that. We're also improving the encumbrances left over from 2015 for this current year, which is a natural part of just showing transparency of what things were existing payables can being carried over. Last up for discussion was some reallocation to cover overtime from the blizzard that we had this past, a month ago. I also ask my colleagues to vote an affirmative for the Resolution 17 as well.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Moving on, ordinance of first reading, we have none this evening. Ordinance for amendment, we also have none. In ordinance for final passage, we have none. Moving on to resolutions, Resolutions 4, 2016. Ms. Petrowski, please read that in the record.
Resolution 4 of 2016 was moved by Mr. Majors, seconded by Mr. Baltimore. It's a resolution ratifying the submission of an application to the Commonwealth's Department of Environmental Protection for the purposes of purchasing two automated leaf collectors.
Any questions or comments on Resolution 4? Hearing none, please call the vote.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mr. Baltimore?
Yes.
Ms. Daniels?
Yes.
Ms. Hodges?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Majors?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Resolution 4 passes.
Thank you. Moving on to Resolution 8.
Resolution 8 of 2016 was moved by Ms. Hodges, seconded by Mr. Majors. It's a resolution ratifying the submission of a grant application to the Commonwealth's Department of Transportation for the purpose of improving the Riverwalk slab and steps in front, in Riverfront Park.
Any questions or comments, council members? Hearing none, please call the vote.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mr. Baltimore?
Yes.
Ms. Daniels?
Yes.
Ms. Hodges?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Majors?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Resolution 8 passes.
Thank you. Moving on to Resolution 9.
Resolution 9 of 2016 was moved by Mr. Johnson, seconded by Mr. Allen. It's a resolution ratifying the submission of a grant application to the Commonwealth's Department of Transportation for the purpose of improving the sidewalk system, providing safer ADA-compliant pedestrian crossings on Hur Street between Cameron Street and North 15th Street.
Mr. Johnson, please give us a small overview of why you did not have this in the meeting, please.
Basically, it was presented to our city engineer through a petition from residents within the area, kind of small, overall, the project, because this is a time-sensitive issue. So we were looking to kind of move forward, and it's only for the submission of the grant. And basically, it's for the project, and I mean, it's basically to improve the ADA-compliant pedestrian crossings on Hur Street between Cameron Street and North 15th Street. So, you know, I would keep the public apprised if we awarded a grant to let everyone know of just the actual plan once the grant is, if we awarded a grant from the Department of Transportation.
Okay. Thank you. And I just wanted the public to have an explanation why Resolution 9 was not put in committee. Is there any questions or comments, council members, on Resolution 9? Hearing none, please call the vote.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mr. Baltimore?
Yes.
Ms. Daniels?
Yes.
Ms. Hodges?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Majors?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Resolution 9 passes.
Thank you. Moving on to Resolution 10.
Resolution 10 of 2016 was moved by Mr. Johnson, seconded by Mr. Baltimore. It's a resolution ratifying the submission of an application to the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation requesting a multimodal transportation fund grant of $6,710,000 to improve vehicular transit, pedestrian, and bicycle movements north of the Capitol Complex to address several transportation-related safety issues.
And this is as well, Resolution 10 was not also put in a committee. Mr. Johnson, just give us a small overview of why we didn't do that as well.
Basically, this was another time-sensitive issue. The deadline for this grant application was due in December, and the city was able to submit that application on time. A part of that application needed to include, basically, a resolution from City Council, but during that time, we were, it was budget hearing time, so that was unable to be done. So we're looking to kind of complete our application so we are eligible for those $6.7 million funding. And kind of overview of what the project tasks within that grant include was Berryhill Street pedestrian improvements from 19th Street to Cameron Street, so touching on some issues with, especially with the corridor right there at 19th and Dairy where it has, where it includes 19th and Berryhill as well. There's almost five different intersections that meet up in that section, as well as the North 17th Street reconstruction, including replacing a signal at North 17th Street and Arsenal Boulevard with a modern-day roundabout to reduce crashes, crashes at the awkward intersection. And also, they're looking at doing some work from, in North Second Street, North Seventh Street, and Division Street, basically upon a Department of Transportation traffic plan that was done sometime in early of 2015. So, you know, once again, this is just a submission of the grant so we can be eligible for those funding. If approved, we will be presented with plans of exactly how these projects will be laid out, which will lead to committee meetings on, for the public to be apprised of what's going on.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Councilmembers, any questions or comments on Resolution 10? Hearing none, please call the vote.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mr. Baltimore?
Yes.
Ms. Daniels?
Yes.
Ms. Hodges?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Majors?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Resolution 10 passes.
Thank you. Moving on to Resolution 15.
Resolution 15 of 2016 was moved by Mr. Majors, seconded by Mr. Baltimore. It's a resolution approving a professional services contract with Wallace, Montgomery &amp; Associates, LLP, a design professional to perform engineering for the Third Street Multimodal Project Phase 1B.
Any additional questions or comments, council members? Hearing none, please call the vote.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mr. Baltimore?
Yes.
Ms. Daniels?
Yes.
Ms. Hodges?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Majors?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Resolution 15 passes.
Thank you. Moving on to Resolution 16.
Resolution 16 of 2016 was moved by Mr. Allen, seconded by Mr. Baltimore. It's a resolution approving a professional services contract with Trout, Ebersol, Groff, LLP, CPAs, and business advisors to conduct liability, post-employment, benefit obligations, disposal, receivable, and sanitation, and reconciliation of city's workers, compensation liability, compensated absence, receivable accounts.
Any questions or comments, council members? Hearing none, please call the vote.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mr. Baltimore?
Yes.
Ms. Daniels?
Yes.
Ms. Hodges?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Majors?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Resolution 16 passes.
Thank you. Moving on to Resolution 17.
Resolution 17 of 2016 was moved by Mr. Allen, seconded by Ms. Williams. It's a resolution approving the first proposed 2016 budget reallocations in order to provide for additional program and equipment allocations and authorize the roll forward of certain 2015 budget year commitments.
Any additional questions or comments? Hearing none, please call the vote.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mr. Baltimore?
Yes.
Ms. Daniels?
Yes.
Ms. Hodges?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Majors?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Resolution 17 passes.
Moving on to Resolution 18.
Resolution 18 of 2016 was moved by Mr. Allen, seconded by Ms. Williams. It's a resolution ratifying professional service contract with Heiss, Gibbons, and Company Incorporated to provide unemployment compensation consultation services as needed.
Any questions or comments? Please call the vote.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mr. Baltimore?
Yes.
Ms. Hodges?
Yes.
Ms. Daniels?
Yes.
Ms. Hodges?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Majors?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Resolution 18 passes.
Moving on to Resolution 19.
Resolution 19 of 2016 was moved by Mr. Allen, seconded by Ms. Williams. It's a resolution approving professional services agreement with Mayor Dussel, certified public accountant, to conduct audits of the city's financial statements and annual audit and financial report for the year ending December 31, 2015.
Any additional questions or comments? Please call the vote.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mr. Baltimore?
Yes.
Ms. Daniels?
Yes.
Ms. Hodges?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Majors?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Resolution 19 passes.
Thank you. Moving on to Resolution 21.
Resolution 21 of 2016 was moved by Ms. Williams, seconded by Mr. Majors. It's a resolution approving professional roof services, PR Incorporated, PRSI, to perform specification design for roof replacement at the Martin Luther King Jr. Building, 10 North Second Street, and fire station number 2, 140 North 16th Street for roof replacement projects.
That will be placed in Public Works Committee. Moving on to Resolution 22.
Resolution 22 of 2016 was moved by Ms. Williams, seconded by Mrs. Hodges. It's a resolution appointing Ronald C. Boston to serve on the Harrisburg Architecture Review Board.
And that will be placed in Administration Committee. Moving on to old business, council members, are there any old business that you would like to address? Hearing none, moving on to new business. New business, council members?
The only thing that I would like to say is that the Department of Parks Recreation and enrichment posted their summer jobs up on the website, the starting age is 16, and the deadline is April 15. It's up by.
Thank you, Ms. Hodges. Anyone else? Okay. The only new business I've had is that there will be a meeting on March 14, 2016, at 5:30 p.m. That would be the administration meeting, and is to address the amendments to the Strong Plan, and Commonwealth representatives will be in attendance. Any other new business, council members?
Madam President, if we may, just to note that tomorrow night, the second night of the workshop for the Strong Plan will be in the EOC in Room 213, I think the number is, in the other, in the police building.
Oh, thank you.
Same room?
Same room. Okay.
5:30.
5:30.
I guess this is my final opportunity to throw my pitch out for our Bill 20, our Bill 4 of 2016. We're having two public meetings, with the first being held at Hack Midtown. That's at 1500 North Third Street. It's going to be in Room 206. We're telling people to use the Riley Street entrance. We are able to have free parking for this event. Parking will be located, there's a parking lot connected to the building right there, and there's also overflow parking that will be available off of Riley Street. These are both hack parking lots. So we encourage all members of the community to attend. We look forward to dialogue, whether, whether if you're for or against the legislation. We feel like this is something that involves public input for good policy to come out of this. Thank you.
Thank you.
And the meeting time starts at 5:30.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. And you may not have heard, the public might not have heard what you had said, Neil, so I'm just going to repeat it again, that tomorrow will be a meeting at 5:30. It will be in Room 213, the City, Martin Luther King Building, and it will be a workshop to meet with the mayor and city council to identify and draft Strong Plan modification updates. And that meeting starts at 5:30 p.m., and the public is certainly invited. Any additional new business, council members? Hearing none, may I have a motion to adjourn?
Come on.
Second, properly moved, and second, meeting is officially adjourned.